I'd like to pull the meeting to order. This is a, the first part of the meeting is a public hearing. And this is Monday, February 10th, 2025 at six o'clock. And we are conducting a public hearing for the purpose of hearing from the public about the superintendent's projected 2025, 2026 school budget. Comments from the public will be welcome after the presentation of the budget from the superintendent.
All right, all right. So I will get started. I see that we have our slide.
One second. I just want to read the posting. This is a legal notice that was in the day. Rotten Board of Education, public hearing on projected FY26 education budget being held on February 10th, 2025 at six o'clock Central Office Room 11. And that was the posting that was in the day.
All right, so we can get started. The orienting you, the slide shows our Board of Education members. Our chair is Beverly Washington, and our vice chair is Adrian Johnson. So we can move to the next slide. And, you know, our, our mission statement is teaching and learning, providing goals or providing dynamic rigorous curriculum for all, ensuring effective engaging instruction, and embracing excellent learning environments. And cultivating an environment of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then when we look at some of our program highlights, all five of our elementary schools are intra-district magnet, which means that parents have choice in signing up for lottery or going to the school that they're designated to. And this is, each school has different partnerships and a different theme. One of our partners is Electric Boat. And just recently, I wrote about it in my weekly update board notes, and it'll come out in my School Matters for All Families. But the Boat program was, is going strong in the elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school. For the high school, it really becomes a quest in the trades and an instruction in the trades. And it's basically field experience for several days. Doing manufacturing, doing, you know, learning about all the trades that build a submarine. In the elementary, it's really learning about what we saw this past week, pipe fitting. And they have different STEM activities that go along with each of these. And we really had CBS coming down the news station to video and to, to talk to the kids and talk to the teachers about their experience with our partnership of Electric Boat. And I think it's going to be Nora O'Donnell who showcases that in a few days. So make sure the board sees that. We're very proud. And, you know, having Electric Boat as a partner, especially at the high school, we're looking at the old shop becoming a manufacturing center. Our career pathways are going strong. Because it's all about college, but also about career. Because it's really the careers that our kids aspire to, that we want them to be ready for. And fine, they're niche. So you know, all of those other things with the rigorous curriculum, amplifying science with the NGSS standards, having an international baccalaureate program, seeing our numbers grow in IBAP and ECC. And then, of course, those career pathways. And we have our National Naval Defense Cadet Corps, too, that we're hoping will grow and grow. They just had an inspection that went really well, and so we're very proud of them as well. Also enhancing literacy and this, you know, with the science of reading, which has happened, K5. Looking at it as it continues, literacy in the upper grades will be our next, you know, endeavor. Making sure that our technologies, we have the one-to-one for our secondaries. And of course, special education, making sure that we have appropriate staffing per the IEP and that we are delivering the services that need to be delivered. Social emotional learning is still very important. It kind of lays a foundation for kids, so they feel good in school. And we have a treehouse program and we have SROs at the middle school and high school. And I just recently met with parents at both CK and Thames River about a threat that was made in our school, you know, about our schools. And just talking to them about some of the safeguards we're going to be putting in place. I know trespassing signs came in. We're looking at the potential of a grant to support SROs or public or safety people in the elementary schools. So we're, we're considering that and, and trying to figure how we can support that. This is a sheet that talks about our financial obligations. What are we bound to for next year's budget that we have in this year's budget that needs to continue? So we talk about legal fees, which between, you know, contractual negotiations, we're getting ready for negotiating with IT and maintenance, custodial, and secretaries. So that's a very big group that helps support our schools. Special education requires some legal expertise as well, as do board matters. So there are many ways that we use our board attorney. Health insurance, we continue to monitor the health insurance claims. I know Lori Lapine is working really hard on getting you most updated information, which will come through the town and through our health, health advisors. And we might even be looking at, you know, a better increase percentage than what they had originally given us. So we're just waiting to have those numbers confirmed, to bring back. Property cost, there have been increases in property costs, and we are monitoring that. Transportation costs, we have increases with the new transportation bid that, or the new transportation contract. But it, it's a contract that really uploaded upfront the, the biggest cost increases in the first two years. And now they are, you know, kind of coming down. So 5% this year, and then I think 3% the next two years. DoD supplement, we have always, with our high military population, been able to get resources, revenue in the town through Impact Aid. And we also get it for children with disabilities. And the third area that we get it is through DoDEA. And that's a supplement. And that has been used in the 10 years, 11 years that I've been here to support technology and equipment, software. This year was our final, we got a final payment in the summer. And we're actually choosing to use that on our nurses. But in the past, it has supported technology. So you'll see some increases with equipment due to that. Utilities, we're watching those electric bills, just like I'm watching it at home. They just seem to just go up and escalate. And sometimes for the service more than the actual electricity. So you know, we're, we're monitoring that. And wanting to make sure that we have the resources available in the budget. Last year, if you remember, when we brought in the 7.91 budget, there were some things that were shaved down a little bit, probably too much. So you'll see in the 25 budget, when you compare the 26, you might see increases, but in some areas, you might see that 25, just we didn't put enough in. So there are some areas like that. And we're just trying to make sure we're, we're accounting for what we need for next year. Contractual and wage inflations. We have those obligations, including the state minimum wage, and we've tried to get ahead of that for next year. And in our negotiations, we tried to also get ahead of that. However, there is an obligation on the Board of Ed budget side that had been on the town with the nurses. It's no change to the taxpayer. It's not an increase in the overall budget at all, the overall town budget, but it is an obligation that is now on the board's side. So, you know, I'm just stating that as a, another contractual increase. District trends, we're always looking at the comings and goings of our students. If we look at the projection for FY26, it's slightly up compared to FY25. It's a kind of revolving door between military and a highly mobile community. We see sometimes 750 children, 800 children coming into our district and 650 leaving our district, going other places. So it's constant in and out and keeping track of all of that with the, with our students. There are some students who come in kindergarten and they graduate from Fitch, but there are a lot that are transient. We can turn the page now. So our proposed budget.
There's a point, a point of privilege. Is there any way to, to make the slide a bit bigger?
Oh, can we make the slide bigger, Caitlin? Please?
We're not running it.
I'm not running it. It's
Oh, okay. Never mind. Thank you. Oh, there you go. Okay, so.
Good?
Yep.
That's better.
This current year we're in, the budget was nearly $88 million. Next year, the new budget is $93,677,420. And it's an increase of five, over 5 million, 5.7, and a 6.5% increase. You can see that really the percent increases in salary have been mostly contractual. That, you know, we're up 5.6%, and that's for certified and non-certified staff and everybody that we employ. Employee benefits are up 6.9%, although I mentioned that Lori Lapine, who's our HR director, and she's really looking carefully at insurance and works with the folks in the town side on insurance and works with the business manager and manager around that as well. So we are expecting to have numbers in March that will help us really realize what, what needs to happen more clearly. Purchase Services is up 6.3%. Property Services is up 16%. And it could have been that perhaps in the 25 budget, it just, we didn't provide enough for this year. And that's why we're seeing the increase. Transportation, insurance, communication, and tuition is only up 1%. Supplies are up 17%, but I would say in the past couple of years, our schools, our site budgets have been held tight. And really, at about 75% have been spent of their total budget. So you know, they have tightened their belts when we've needed that to happen on supplies. So this year, we're trying to give them what they've asked for. I talked about the zero budgeting process, so that they really asked for what they needed. And you know, so that's part of why that has increased. Equipment, this looks tremendous because it's a $483,000 increase, but we had only budgeted $74,000 for this year. And we've always had that half million, 500,000, helping to provide technology, equipment, and software, and those kind of things. So that increase is really directly related to DoD supplement. Not having that come in for this year, or we're assuming it's not coming in just with the, the numbers of military-connected or military-dependent students. We could be in for a surprise, but I don't know that we will be. And then dues and fees. When we look at the budget in '24 and the budget in '26, we see a $14,000 increase, which is 16.8% in dues and fees. So the next page is the revenue page. And the revenue that we receive from the federal government and the state government goes directly to the town. This is, these are the funds that offset for the taxpayers, because it's coming through the town, but it supports education and the education budget. So the one of the largest contributors to this is really our state fund of excess cost sharing, which is kind of middle of the page, $25 million. And it's guaranteed for next year. It's one of those things that has been held harmless since we are an alliance district. We might have been one of the last ones. And we might be doing very well amongst our peers in the alliance districts, but it also contributes the $25 million and doesn't reduce it in the time that we're in an alliance district. Another thing from the state in the middle of the page is special ed excess cost. Magnet school transportation, adult education, and non-public services. So the total amount of state funds in the middle of the page is $26,168,623. And it accounts for about 27.9, close to 28% of the revenue that comes in. Up at the top, where you see the federal resources, we have DoD, Impact Aid, Department of Education, which came in at $6,087,065. Medicare at $225,225,308. So the total federal monies that have come in is $6,312,373. There's also EFS federal grants and state grants, and the total of all of those grants is another $41,530,996. So when you look at all those revenue sources, you see that about 55.67% of the total education budget is covered by revenue that is coming into the town to support education. And that's a better number than we've seen in the past several years. So I was happy to see that kind of support coming our way. All right, we can move on. The next is really hard to read, but I gave you a more detailed page so that you could see it. The presentation and the entire budget is on the website. The board continues to look at it and will be looking at it all month long and making adjustments. We're going to keep track of it on a tracker sheet. And they've already made some great suggestions about the the actual narratives, giving more information to families. And that's being looked at and recorded, and we'll be updating that as well. So that by the end of this month, we'll be bringing our budget, the new, it'll be the board's budget, and they will be voting on it and, you know, approving a board budget, not just a superintendent's budget. I just got them started. And now they're going to do some heavy lifting with me and, and we'll go back and we'll see what we can do. But this is a budget that supports everything that we have today for our students, doesn't take anything away. And but we will look to see if there's some other efficiencies or some other things the board might want to add into the budget. So, but it really goes through and it shows you all the salaries in more detail, what we're paying for administrators, teachers, and other staff, substitutes, custodians. So it, it breaks it down a little more, and I'll make sure that I get this this whole presentation up on the website as well. And the bottom line is the same, 6.5 increase, $93,677,420. That's, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. Now we welcome public comments. Comments should be limited to three minutes or less. Citizens should state their names and addresses for the record. Do we have anybody online that would like to speak? Raise your hand if you'd like to speak, if you're online.
We don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, anyone here would like to speak? Go once, twice.
Just, we're asking that you sign in and put your address for us. That'd be great.
Hi, my name is Portia Bordelon. I live at 24 Jefferson Drive. For full disclosure, I'm a town council member. For full disclosure, Ian Thomas, who also is on the Board of Education, is my husband. I'm a mother of two sons who graduated from Fitch, also a Fitch House, Fitch High School graduate myself. And for full disclosure, I also worked in the school system as a para and have done some work with Learn in the past. So I'm very familiar with a lot of the internals and the processes. Again, I stand before you with just my concerns. I'll speak tonight as a paid taxpayer. I'll have my chance of looking at all this when it comes to me. Just keep in mind, you know, I think the Board of Ed members, that this budget is about 68%, I believe, of the full town budget. Yet I feel like it has the shortest amount of time of deliberation as a whole in comparison to the entire town budget. To me, it's one of the most important pieces of the budget outside of law enforcement, ambulance, and other major health thing for our town to function. Education is the key. So I think, you know, it deserves more time. With that, I am concerned about the amount of time that the Board of Ed is getting a chance to really go through this budget in a full profit and deliberation. I commend the policy, the group that looked at trying to make this referral as a budget, the committee that worked on looking at ways to improve the budget process. I'm sad to see that a lot of the things that they recommended and that was voted unanimously on whose side it's hasn't even finished through the policy committee meeting. To me, my opinion, it seems like stalling in a lot of ways and a lot of things not going through. I'm just absurd. Community has spoken and said that they were concerned. And you work, you know, for the town and the taxpayers as the Board of Education first and foremost. So those are my concerns. And that's what I'm here, I've heard from the community, loud and clear. It looks clear like one policy barely made it through at the last policy meeting when I watched, 13, 41, 20.
Can you do me a favor, stick to the budget, not to policy?
I, it's about the budget.
You're talking policy, though.
3120 is about the budget. And I, you know.
But what in the budget do you see that you want to address and not a policy?
I'm speaking about the budget and how it's being rolled out. That's my concern, which is about you just add my time back. So I, I'll add that back. So my concern is about how the budget's being rolled out and my concerns with the whole presentation of the budget, absolutely. So 3120 barely made it through. And I'm concerned because the committee voted unanimously on having that. Obviously, the language was changed and it was, you know, put through, but things in here are what the committee wanted. I was shocked when I heard Board of Ed members seeming as if they didn't know why some of the language should be in there. Let's go back.
Again, you're talking about policy, not the budget.
Let me get there.
Get right there.
So the audit concerns is a financial concern that we should be addressing. That's why the wording should have went in there, because the audit was not given to the Board of Ed members in a timely manner. Also, looking at the numbers here, not just audit, but the nurses. When you talked tonight, you said the nurses' funding is back in. That wasn't very transparent, or there was a lot of who said what that happened with that. So that's why that language needs to be in there. That's to protect the Board of Ed members, as well as the superintendent, to make sure that policy's there, so that things are deliberated in a fashion. With that, my concern always is closing achievement gaps. I hear that this is a somewhat of a level budget. You're saying nothing's changing, really. I wanted to see enhancements where we are looking at our most vulnerable and making sure that we're providing remedial support. Based on those math scores that you guys presented that were outrageous. I'm surprised that this presentation doesn't show more support in that area. There should be huge number changes in that, yet I don't see them. That is a concern. Again, we speak about IV, IV programs. Legerd was just in, what, 29th out of top schools in the area. Fitch was nowhere in the top 30 on those findings that were just posted. And yet they don't have an IV program. So it doesn't, it's not the end-all, be-all. It's a great, nice have, but it's not a must. With that, if we're going to have such programs, we should be funding, funding our remedial support just at the same caliber as we do the high enrichment programs. So I don't see anything, I didn't hear anything about improving those math scores anywhere in this presentation, and that is a concern. Also, another one of my big things I've been asking for the last three, five years is a full-time career counselor. We have a part-time, and other neighboring schools have a full-time career counselor. So you want those enrichment programs and those high-end programs like the IV, but we need to fund a person to make sure they're helping students, you know, get to that level. So again, if this is a level, if nothing's changed with the budget that you presented, then that means that it's still a part-time career counselor. So those are my concerns and making sure our sports and athletics are funded equitably. And hearing that you're just matching with minimum wage, I'm, I'm shocked that anyone that works in a public school system is making minimum wage. So what are we doing to enhance? Because we can barely get paras to stay. Learn, Norwich, New London, all surrounding areas pay way more than Rotten. So I, I am concerned about that as well. And I'll, I'll take a stab at this the next time. But again, I thank you for your work. I look to watch the Board of Ed members now take a hold of this and see, but definitely am concerned about the promises that were made, that this was all going to be cleaned up and all the things that the Board of Ed asked for was going to be put into here, and it's not. It's still not clean and hard to read. So with that, I wish you guys the best of luck to the Board of Ed and, you know, I empathize with you guys for having very little time to tackle this budget. And hopefully, maybe those policies that are sitting there, collecting docs that people worked on, will come to life and not be dragged down or sit any longer. I, I don't know what's going on. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address the board?
No, and thank you for letting us know about this meeting. And I think more people need to
They state your name and address, please.
Oh, my name is Joanna. I'm at 21 West Elder King. And I think when I received this notification, I was really sure that they said it. And I think more people need to be here and, and speak. Also, another thing is that they have Spanish as a second language, that you provide a translator to be able to be here. So I'm trying to do my best right now. I have three children with special needs. One in high school and two in elementary school. Like, I speak Spanish at home, so my kids' first language is Spanish. So my middle son need a lot of help with English as a second language learning. And I don't see as much help with that particular area. Also, I have a lot of friends that they don't understand a lot about special education. They need to know about these feelings, because they have a lot of cuts. And I know they have shorter so paraprofessionals. And our kids' special blind minds don't need a one-on-one. So we need to make sure they have the quality, because they don't be able to come back home and say, you know, I don't have somebody work with me. They don't have that communication with me. So, and I think there are a lot of things that are going on. My son was restrained 19 times this current year. And I ask a lot of help. And I know if I request my son to be our replacement, it will cost more money to the town. And I have the tools to do it, but I choose to be here in a special easy school, because it's what it's supposed to be. So please make sure our kids be able to get what they need, a one-on-one paraprofessional. And I know they live in, because other towns pay better than Islam or Norwich. So make sure they are the ones who work with our kids one-on-one. Not a teacher, the teacher is supervising, but they want to speak one-on-one with him. He's a paraprofessional. And I know a lot of kids and teachers left, because this is too much. They go a lot of kids in a room from one teacher. And no matter professional, maybe it's supposed to be one-on-one, but it's not one-on-one. So please make sure our kids get what they need. I don't understand too much about numbers, because I don't have time. But I try to be, make sure they get what they need. And last thing, like I repeated, I don't want to say And last thing, like I repeated, I don't want to send my son to be our replacement because it costs a lot of money. And it's also in my money because I pay taxes. So make sure parents, they have special needs kids, they'll be here also and talk about what they have. The kids, they get what they want, they need, not because they want, because they don't have that communication to say, mommy, I don't have a paraprofessional today. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, anyone online again would like to speak? Raise your hand. Okay, with that, I'll call for a adjournment at the public hearing. Have a motion to adjourn. Andrea, and do I have a second? Might all those favor adjourn in the public hearing? Say aye. Post extension, adjourn. We now call the order, call to order the special meeting of the Board of Education. Ian Howes, well, it's at six-thirty, it's almost six-forty at Central Office on February tenth, twenty-twenty-five. It's a budget work session. The superintendent has presented her budget and now it's in the hands of the Board of Education. So I will, you want to do FTEs?
I can start with FTEs, yep. It's under, it's behind the green tab.
This is not updated.
And I'm going to take you through that. What was done was it was a roll-up of the other two schedules on this page. So if you look at the large pages, they roll up to the first page. If you look across.
Going to parliamentary privilege. We need to broadcast this and publish. Like, what are we doing? We normally project the thing up for people to follow along.
What happened to Clint? Clint, are you there?
Move it over and see if I can get him.
We'll put it up in a minute, but I can talk to you all if you have your books in front of you. You see that for the top page, it's all of our certified staff, teachers and administrators. It's the FTE report was prepared at the end of January thirtieth of this year. In the elementary section, you see the same amount of principals and assistant principals that show up on the, on the school pages and show up on the rollout page behind it. So there are five principals and seven assistant principals for elementary. Underneath, you see two principals for secondary and six assistant principals total. If you go across the page, you see the total number of administrators in elementary, which is twelve, and the total number of administrators in secondary, which is nine. You also see that on the right-hand side, you see the number of classroom teachers at the elementary level and special educators. And that one hundred and fifty-one point six classroom teachers plus the thirty-four special ed teachers equals the two hundred and eleven point one total teachers, teachers and administrators, two twenty-three point one, it looks like. And that all ties in with the roll-up on the top page for teachers and administrators at elementary and secondary. The total being four hundred and forty-three point two total certified teachers and administrators. And that's the four hundred and forty-three twenty-three that you see as a subtotal on the page that talks about teachers and administrators. So the roll-up was done. You then have grant-funded positions. So we've added those two through Title I, Title IV, and the DOEA grants that we've received. We also have enterprise funds. And in the enterprise funds, they're self-sufficient. So whether it's the food service program or whether it's the treehouse program, they afford, and their enterprise fund affords paying for their staff. And you basically, it's showing you the number of administrators that they have. On the non-certified page, you're going to see a breakdown of all our non-certified staff. So we have our paraprofessionals, library techs, our tutors, our classroom and bus aides. And when you add those all up at the elementary level, you're talking about a hundred and forty-four point seven-five that are paid through by the operation grants. There are some that are paid for by IDEA. Below, you can see IDEA under grant funding. That's another forty-five teachers that are paraprofessionals that would be added to the one oh nine, one eighty-nine, one oh nine pairs at the elementary and the forty-one at the secondary level. So the subtotal of all the Board of Ed funded pairs is one forty point three plus the forty-five, which is your one ninety-five. So we take a look at the number of total tutors as well. And if you see down below, the total tutor staff is thirty-seven point five for the whole district. And then classroom and bus aides amount to thirty-seven point two-five at the bottom when you total them up. There are four securities. There's actually, they, they do half-day splits. So they do early morning with kids coming in and transportation to kind of middle day through lunch. And then they, the others come in a little before lunch. They do overlap during lunch and then stay till the end of the day. So there's actually eight people. We have our community coordinators, athletic trainer, BCBA. And the district-wide, I think, is the BCBA. Isn't that right? I think it's yes, under that. And then we see additional community coordinators and support staff under the title grants to, to have a total of nine point five. And that's because you don't have a full-time community coordinator at every school. There are ten to twenty hours. They sometimes will also, if a secretary is out, especially at our elementaries where we only have one secretary, the community coordinator will also help support the building if someone is out. You see our clerical staff now for the elementary, basically every, most of the elementary schools, except for the large ones, have one. And then the larger schools, the Thames River and the Mystic River have two. At the secondary level, we have three at the Broughton Middle School and five at the high school. So and then we have certainly our, our secretarial staff or clerical staff here at Central Office, which is an additional two, twenty-one point two-five. And it looks like we have a district-wide person part-time as well. So the total number of clerical is thirty-six point fifty-five. Our custodians, we were just talking about that in facilities meeting. We have reduced custodians after COVID and the R-PESR funds being eliminated. We went down back to pre-COVID custodial support. And we do have a couple, a one in point five position still outstanding in maintenance because it's kind of hard to find. And we are able to find a part-time person who could do some of the work, but we don't, we still have that outstanding area. But if you look, there are sixteen at the elementary, nineteen and a half at the secondary. So for a total of thirty-eight custodians. Our maintenance are considered district-wide because they have certain expertise. For instance, you have someone who's really good at plumbing. You have someone who's really good at HVAC. Some, you know, they all have different roles to pay. Some who are like general contractors that can do a lot of different things. But the total district number is eleven point five for maintenance. There's also IT techs, and we have eleven of those that are really also, just like the maintenance, they serve all of our schools. Nurses and health aides, there are nine at the elementary level. They basically have both a nurse and a health aide at each of the schools. And we also support Sacred Heart as well. And I think that's probably where you see district-wide is for Sacred Heart. And then in the secondary, we have two each at each of the schools with nurse and aide. And so a total of fifteen nurses and school health aides. So when you kind of go across the line, looking at total clerical custodial maintenance, you see the thirty-two there plus one forty-four point seven-five with our tutors and paras and classroom aides and security, community coordinators for a total of one seventy-six point seven-five at the elementary level, a total of ninety-four point five at the secondary. And when you put that together, we should have three hundred and thirty-six point one when we add in the district votes. So the district-wide is thirty-seven point six and Central Office is twenty-seven point two-five. So when you add up all the one seventy-six point seven-five and ninety-four point five, the thirty-seven point six and the twenty-seven point two-five, you get that three hundred and thirty-six point one. And then there are some people also in grants. So we have, it looks like IDEA, that's forty-five crosses over for the paras. So there's another sixty point five in grants. And the enterprise fund, like I said, was self-sufficient. You saw the administrators on that other page. And here you see really the food service and the treehouse staff that supports the programs. Treehouse is in every school. Food services does, you know, takes care of feeding all of our schools and all of our students. So, you know, the total number of staff for both programs is fifty-five point five. When you add up all total of non-certified staff, you see the four fifty-two point one, oh, which ties out, and it ties out on the school sheets.
We were, there is one nurse missing from Sacred Heart. So the nurses are actually sixteen. We discovered that at our last meeting because the position at Sacred Heart was vacant at the start of the year. So Northeast Academy should have two, a nurse and a health aide. And then the district-wide would be the float nurse and Sacred Heart nurse. So if you would just adjust the total nurses and health aides from fifteen to sixteen. There is no health aide at Sacred Heart, just a nurse.
Do you see the Sacred Heart nurse added here now?
She, the Sacred Heart nurses in district-wide.
Oh, okay.
We're going to bump the nursing supervisor back up to Northeast. So instead of one health worker at Northeast, it should be two. You'll see that in your final budget book. Sorry, Mark.
Everyone can unmute, and we'll just pull it down if you're making a noise.
So you'll see in your final budget book, but I just wanted to update you now that there's two health staff at Northeast Academy for a total of sixteen.
In district-wide, it should be one?
Two, the float nurse and the Sacred Heart nurse. We'd originally put the nursing supervisor there, but we're going to put her back up in Northeast. She is also the N E A head nurse, and she also helps support colleagues.
Yeah, you said we'd be getting it in the final budget book. When are we actually going to get that book?
Well, we're working on the narrative now, and the final book will be your, your actual budget.
All right, so how do we, so how do we, I mean, we just had an add of one nurse salary. So with benefits, it's going to add, I don't know, eighty thousand dollars or something.
Working on the benefits.
So how do we see that? How do we see that? So we can make decisions now. Some of us would be looking at the percent increase as well as all of the things that we're offering in, in looking at those two things together and making decisions. So if we don't know now where we are, I'm not really sure where our budget is now because I know we've made a lot of changes over the last two weeks. But they're not accounted to in any final.
The funding is the same. So the, the funds haven't changed. I mean, the, the budget is still the budget.
Will we be getting this final budget book? What, what day? I mean, we're planning on voting on the twenty-fourth. What day do you plan on giving the board something to vote on? A piece of paper that shows the whole budget?
Well, I would hope that unlike last year, that you all would be able to go through this process and really come to a decision before you have to vote on it, right? So that we could get the book out to you before you voted on it.
Wait, wait. Bev, Jen has her hand raised, and also I do too.
Yeah, I would, just to finish. Last year, yeah, we didn't have the book until after we voted on it. There were some things that, changes that I didn't understand, you know, from our meetings. But last year was a, I'll call it a complicated process. I personally don't feel comfortable voting unless I have time to review what I'm voting on. So with, I think that we should be able to talk about dates. If we're planning on voting on the budget on the twenty-fourth, which is that the correct date to everyone's knowledge?
Yep.
And what date will we have an actual budget that we can review to vote on?
Well, it, you know, it depends on when those numbers stop changing, when you stop, you know, tracking it and saying, this is for sure. So right now, you've given me some suggestions for the narrative. I can certainly give you the narrative review when that's complete. I know they've been working on it. But as far as any numbers that would be changing, additions, subtractions, we've got to kind of go through that process to do the tracker because I can't be making budget books every week because it takes enormous amount of time, like Central Office shuts down to make these books. So that's a lot of wasted paper. So we can certainly give you the narrative update. We can give you the updates that you're talking about. We think we're going to keep a separate tracker sheet of the adds and the subtracts to keep track of that for.
Yeah, but by doing that last year, then the final budget was different than what I thought we were tracking. I don't know how other board members.
Well, that's why we're going to do it in a Google Doc this time. We won't be adding.
Why can't we just have a document and modify it? So that the board can actually see what's happening, what the changes are. I mean, I, I was under the impression that we were going to get a new document on Friday that was going to have all the modifications since the thirty-first, which I believe we found lots of errors. So with that knowledge, I didn't make hand notes in version three because I thought we were going to have a new clean version. Now, I don't know how to get to that, just those changes. I, I guess I have to re-watch all the meetings and try to pick up on all what the changes were.
So one of the things we talked about was to put all benefits in a district-wide category. So we will be pulling that from there. And then the other thing I know that we were talking about was the narrative part. And so to give more clarity in the narrative. So those two things, and, you know, I know that the, the staff who's working on it have been given those things to add to benefits. No.
Can you give us a date when we will have a final budget? Vote on?
Well, we all have a final budget.
If you don't, so we have to vote on something on the twenty-fourth. Can you give us a drop dead date on when you will have a modified document? So we have time to look at it and see if the modified document is similar to our.
Would you like it, Adrian?
I would like it now.
Yeah, but the only thing we've changed.
I would like the superintendent's budget right now so we can have your budget, all the changes to date. I, I was under the understanding, and maybe I'm incorrect, but that we would be getting a final copy of the superintendent's budget, and then it gets handed over to the board. So what I feel like has been handed over to the board is a marked-up document that everyone probably has a slightly different version. At least everyone has a different version than me because my marking up is not as complete as they would have done. And I know that we weren't going to get a new document.
It's another week. That's what he's asking for. All the changes that we've made so far. All the changes that we've made so far, you want some budget?
Okay, I'll get it for you on Monday.
Well, Monday?
No.
Or Friday.
That's not, that, we're going to waste another week, another week's time.
Yes.
wasting time.
Okay. I agree with Adrian, like we need a new book, like a clean, like I keep saying, it's like mailing off your tax return, right? And whatever is in that book, whether right, wrong or indifferent, we're going to fix it so that it becomes the board's budget. Right now, like I have scribbles in here. In our marketing pages, the certified staff is close, the un, the non-certified staff is different. That was one of the first things I asked for. And some of these other slides, it's left justified with decimal places, but that's the minimal extent, right? The, the greatest extent is we proposed the document. We had originally said December sixteenth is we are going to get a final draft. This board was gracious enough to move it to January sixth. And that was the version that we should have been working against. Never, never. And I know certain things happen, right? So we can excuse that. Never have I ever been on a board where the board was part of the sausage-making process of the budget. Like this should have been completed and provided to us and then we can make adjustments so that we can track our changes. So the fact that you gave us a budget and we are changing numbers constantly, it was never final. It was like sending a tax return and putting an amendment, an amendment, an amendment. And so we don't know where we are. At least if we get a clean book on Wednesday, then whatever scribbles we make, we can justify like each page. This needs to change, this needs to change. And so by the time this binder comes back to us, we can all go through it and say, yep, they removed the decimal places, yep. The FTEs in the green section matches the marketing document. I think where the board is getting frustrated is that we've made a lot of changes and we all take notes in a different fashion. Some of us more than others and some of us less than others, but it's not complete. So Adrian might think that we've invested a hundred thousand in, I don't know, somewhere. And I might think like, oh, we cut two hundred thousand somewhere just based on like our understanding of the meeting. So nothing is clear and nothing is concise and we just need to stop this right now of like, oh, we're just going to move benefits to a single resource. It's not, that's the, that's the most minimal of issues at this point. We need to be able to address like, are the numbers FTEs correct with the salaries that are there? Because it's been brought up by Dean and I think Ian that the percent increases and the change is greater than what is negotiated in the contract. And I like basically said, oh yeah, because there's probably X amount of salaries there. In order for us to get comfortable and say that this is the board's budget, we need to be able to start. If you want us to start from the January sixth one, we can start from the January sixth one and scribble all the way through that one and hand it off. I don't know, like if you think it's going to be like a lot of resources and I can appreciate it, like having a lot of resources, right? But so I don't know about my fellow board people because at least January sixth, we know all the issues, we all have our notes and we can all go through it.
Can we get a call and touch you by one thing?
I will try. It's, we're shorthanded, but I will try.
I don't think they know and I would try.
Well, I.
I'm going to have. I wouldn't say.
Well, like I said, we can go through the January.
Just the narrative that.
So can you get us one without the narrative and add the narrative later, but get us a hard budget?
It's actually for you.
Is it snowing tomorrow?
Do you ask Matthew?
Could we get a hard budget with and get the narrative changes later so we have the numbers to work with?
I think the numbers are okay, but I will double check.
I'm sorry, I'm out of order, I think.
Not bad.
Okay. I don't know, I hope you know the depth of the frustration of this board. It was my understanding that at the end of the process that we finished last week, that the superintendent's budget was to become the board's budget and that we were to move line by line through the board's budget. Now we're talking about, I'll try to get the, the, the words, but.
It, this is. The superintendent's budget.
No. But not with the changes that we made.
Have you given us your final complete, absolutely done budget? Bless you know, that's, that's the problem. I'm, I'm so sorry, I really want to support you, but this is very difficult.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Myself.
I don't think the numbers changed that much, but the narrative.
Narrative did and they worked on that. I can get you the narrative, but I, you know, if you want me to produce a whole new book, I will.
Madam Chair.
Is it up on the, is it up on the net? Is it up on the net for the public to look at?
Yes.
Where?
It's on the website.
It is, no, I went to there and doesn't show those numbers.
It's in the presentation. It's on the front page.
So I, I want to thank my colleagues for stating and expressing their frustration because I share that deeply. As Jen identified, I mean, I don't, we worked as a budget procedure committee to come up with a framework based out of the competition, confusion of last year. We wanted a different framework to approach this budget. And we worked as a team, trying to be part of the larger team as the board, working in concert with the administration in order to come up with a better framework to which we could get a complete superintendent's budget early enough in the process where we could acquaint ourselves with it. And then begin to critique it and make adjustments in a very structured, systematic fashion so that we all can understand what we're changing and how we're changing and we would have all of the opportunity to speak to numbers and vote on numbers. None of this has occurred. And I have tried to be a team player, but now I just feel like we're getting played. And, and, excuse me, please let me finish. And, and now I am gone from being disappointed week to week to week with this whole process as a delay, delay, delay. And quite frankly, it feels, you know, as Jen also identified, we are way too involved in making the superintendent's budget. This is not what I signed on for. I signed on to review the superintendent's budget incomplete, in, in, in completion. You know, the, the total thing. And so like, you know, I'm no longer, no longer disappointed. Now I'm officially disgruntled because I feel like this is not.
What's this?
Please, let me finish my thought. What, we, we, that, when, there's a fundamental change that that is occurring. One, the, the, the benefits are being pulled out of every single function, function code that includes employees and being placed in a district wide, that's going to change the math in almost every single function code. So all that is, is, that's a systemic change, foundational change. You know, and, and that's going to change our perception of each function code as we look at it. So that, that for one needs to get done. And when we parted ways last week, I'm, I share my, my colleague's impression that I thought we were going to get an electronic copy on Friday and, you know, and hopefully a paper copy by Monday so that we could go through it in a systematic fashion as we discussed also last week, where we were, we had all decided as a board consensus-wise, at least that was my impression, that we would have sort of an opening session tonight where we talked about long-term goals, overarching, you know, percentages that we wanted to target. And then go through function code by function code. So we made sure that everyone had an opportunity to look at every single code and move a number if they felt so inclined. You know, there's also the questions of like the, the, you know, FY twenty-five numbers, you know, some of the fuel stuff that was changed. You know, again, like all I wanted was, and I'm not the only one, it sounds like. I was expecting it, just a clean document to come in and start fresh, you know, and start in a very organized fashion and that.
So you're talking the narrative and the health benefits are the two.
Well, I'm not going to limit it to that because we had a whole series of notes on various different departments and things. I mean, I have a lot of notes in here. I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to limit to just like the one or two things that we're identifying now as the, the standouts. I mean, there is supposed to be a system where, and, and honestly, like, I, I know, we gave feedback repeatedly on all this over the period of weeks. And it just feels again, like we're just stalling out. And now we're being told that we're not going to get the final, if we get it by Monday, then we have one week left to do this.
Let me ask.
And we have no meetings scheduled. We have one meeting tonight. We have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday where there would be a work session. And then there's one more meeting scheduled for next week on the nineteenth. And then on the twentieth, yeah, so that, you know, I just. We are, the main ask of the budget procedure committee was that we had a complete comprehensive and cohesive budget delivered early. And as Jen noted, like we initially were asking for before the holidays, but then accepted it after the holidays. But then after that, like we found ourselves, at least I'll say that what it looked to me is like the board was going through, doing the proofreading that the business office should have been doing. So, and, and we found numerous errors and typos and, 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 and miscalibrations and things like that. And, you know, shifting numbers from FY twenty-five. So I mean, I don't know how we, I mean, I just wanted a clean shot and I was hoping by tonight, we would have that opportunity to be able to get a clean document with all the adjustments made up until the last time we met last week. And this has not occurred.
I had my interim director address some of this since he is in the know.
Well, he can, but it, the, the, just the fact is we didn't get a clean document. I thought we were going to get one too. I was looking for that on Friday.
I know, I've, I've sent another clean, the other clean document that already came to you. And I know that they were working on the narrative and the benefits. We've had admin assistants listening to the recordings and looking at the notes so that they're going through that. Ray, are you there?
Yes, I am.
I know that you kind of, and Lori had been working with Peter on the narratives and that I think is accomplished. I'm wondering about how we are with the benefits as far as bringing them into the district wide as recommended.
We have them all summed up. They're part of the worksheet modifications that we have as well as the nurse was added in. I personally added the nurse in last week to start the extract. Those are the major changes. Now, the benefits really have no effect on the bottom line. The nurse will have an effect of about a seven and a half percent. Excuse me, point oh seven five percent change. So your overall change is six point five eight percent to the bottom line of the, the, to the bottom line of your budget right now, increase of what.
So how, how difficult is it to get all of that information and get out a new budget even electronically to the board?
As you know, I'm not in the office tomorrow. Wednesday or Thursday at very best, I need, I need to see where Peter's at. He's doing pay, he's working on payroll right now. So I'm, I'm, we'll switch gears and bring him back into it again.
Okay. If that, if, I know, but you're working from home, right?
No.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Oh, that's right, you've got a day. Okay. Well, if you could email him and I'll check in with him tomorrow.
I'll give him a call first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll take care of it. Okay, we'll, we'll re-modify things. But to my understanding, most of the changes have taken place within this current book that I have. There were some, other than the consolidation of the healthcare and pension pro, uh, numbers.
And the narrative, those were the two items that I thought were the biggest.
The narratives are the big things.
Those are the things from the last meeting were in the narrative. And then the just, and those are all updated. And then the question with the health insurance, which it sounds like you guys are working on.
Well, the health insurance, we, we've actually pulled them, I, I'm looking at it here now. We pulled them, started pulling them out and we've got them consolidated so that we're going to bring them to one, I think we're bringing them to the seventeen hundred function. And that's where we're going, going to be displaying them. Uh, we just haven't put that out yet because it's part of the process of the change. Normally in a change log, we maintain these changes and then we publish one last book. But it's obvious that they want a new book now, so we'll.
We said that last week.
I'm sorry?
That was the consensus last week is that we're going to start fresh, that we're going to get a new document. Like I, I don't understand why this seems like it's a new conversation.
Maybe we can, it didn't happen, let's see what we, we're going to have it Wednesday.
We're toward getting it for you. It's not a new conversation if that's the situation you're making. And we'll, we'll take it from there. We'll move one step at a time and I'll get it for you. Nobody's trying to hide anything, nobody's trying to move things or do anything.
And I feel like the board.
No kidding. Its ability. And I came on board at what time of the hour? At the eleventh hour, I'm trying to do the best I can to help you the best I can.
I don't think anybody.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's.
I don't think anybody's criticizing.
We're happy you're here, Ray.
All right, Dean.
Okay. I started with my hand up, thinking one thing and I'm thinking, I'm just going to focus it on this. The bottom line, other than the nurse's benefits, the point oh seven, whatever, other than that, yeah, the bottom line hasn't changed, none of the numbers have changed. We may like to change some numbers. We've never voted on any dollar changes, we've asked a lot of questions. And one thing that has been changing, well, the, other than can we get the real twenty twenty-five numbers? That, that was an issue. Can, when we, to the extent we want to compare with the prior year, it was important to have, at least in a couple of key areas, the real twenty twenty-five numbers, not the, not the, the phantom numbers, the alternative numbers. Uh, but the one thing that I've tried to match up is, is the FTEs. And again, I, I've been trying to play with some mathematical models because I don't know all of, for example, the eleven oh one, function eleven oh one, all the elementary school, the K through five salaries. Again, no one, as far as I know, is getting a six, six and a half percent increase. And yet it seems like the average between the two populations moves six and a half percent. And I'm trying to think of a way to like engineer a scenario where nobody sees that percentage increase in their pay and yet somehow the group on average moves. And I, it may just be, like I said, an arithmetic phenomenon, a, some, an artifact of statistics. But leaving that aside for the moment, should there be, and, and others have addressed this as well, I presume that there is like a, a, a correspondence between the first page of a section, the FTEs, and then the dollar figures associated with the FTEs. So that if I see so many certified teachers, so under, you know, under one oh one, when I look at one oh one on the dollar figure, that, you know, a hundred and twenty-seven proposed K through five teachers are going to cost us eleven, just salaries alone, you know, eleven and a half or eleven point six million dollars. Uh, and that's the assumption that I've been going on, that there's always a matchup. That may or may not be the case. But I want an assurance there. The corollary to that is, when I'm just looking at the FTE pages that we've just reviewed, should there be and what am I missing when I look at a total elementary classroom teachers, we've got a hundred and fifty-one point six listed. We've got the five elementary school teachers, they add up to one fifty-one point six. Is that instead of the one twenty-seven for, for code account one oh one or what's missing there? That's the kind of thing that I'm, that I'm looking at. And that, and I'm not saying there's a mistake, I'm saying I, I need to understand this before we move forward tonight or any other night. So you see where I'm saying that? Okay. So should there be a match between, you know, when we say classroom teachers, one fifty-one point six? Should I see that here? Should I, what, what should I be looking at? Who, who am I missing? Who's not in one oh one under function eleven?
What page are you on?
Okay, so I'm on four point two, okay? It says it's.
The total says one fifty one for elementary.
Right. And then when you go to five point six, under one oh one certified teachers for the elementaries, we list a total of a hundred and twenty seven.
That are not in the board's budget.
Okay.
So your FTEs might be larger because you have people coming through grants.
Okay, but we don't, but the one fifty one point six is not listed under the grant funded section. So there are other grants that are not on this, on the, on the, on the four point two table. And that's part of the, that's part of the confusion. Yeah. I mean, there, there are many different ways to look at something, uh, especially something that's complicated. But at some point, whether I'm pulling on the elephant's tail or the, the trunk or whatever, I don't know, I'm looking at an elephant. So.
So, I'm sorry, preliminary privilege, uh, do we have a fully, uh, what's the latest electronic version of the full budget that's been sent out? Because I just tried to find one I could project up. And this one is the one that dates back, it doesn't even have the one fifty, one six number. It's, it's, this is not the right version.
Are you online? Did you get from online?
No, I was going through my email.
So if you go to the BOE finance department, I, I think that's the.
Yeah, it's on the front page.
Alright, is.
Oh, it is.
It should be one version, wherever it is, it should be one version of whether it's correct or not. There should be one version of the budget.
And they love it.
Two is, makes it really confusing.
I'm just trying to find the, the latest electronic version of the, of the FY twenty six budget draft. So I could project it up and so people could follow along with what we're talking about. And, um, no, I have to go on the website. Yes, it's up now.
So, how do you want to proceed? Do you wanna start with, uh, whatever's behind the pink tab, or do you wanna?
Go ahead, Mike. I, I still have questions on the green tab. I was just letting it. Is that okay? Yeah, thank you. And so I, I found the green tab helpful with that breakdown. Um, and just on the, so I guess this is four dash two, the certified teachers and administrators. If I go to, in the blue, the subtotal, BOE budgets funded, we get to that four hundred forty three point two. Um, that's, so that's total teachers and administrators funded through the, the board of it budget. From last year's budget, that was four thirty eight point six, so that's up by four point six. Um, and then that, if you look over the next column, there's a teachers one, that's up by, um, five point one. I think, I, if I look at it, I think most of the, the additional teachers are in, um, you just go over to the left and that's special ed teachers and then the bilingual, hearing impaired psychologists. With speech language, um, special education support services. Martin, I think that's where the, the plus five is from last year.
We did have an extra special ed and an extra speech language, Denise, I remember that. And that was per, you know, Denise, from last year to this year.
Yeah, so it's up five. It's just like.
You had to add one.
Talk about that.
Review it though. Yeah, in the ABA program. You have to, instead of one. No, I'm talking about even special ed teachers.
Oh, special ed teacher, the other one, yes, that's correct.
So you added, so, uh, there's like, it's up five. In, and that was at the, I remember you mentioned. GMS, right?
Speech language, I think, was up. And then there was some unfilled positions that brought middle, like we couldn't find a Spanish teacher. Um, and we finally hired a Spanish teacher, so they probably had it sub in there for the year. But there were some of those situations where we couldn't find a staff member and you had a sub who was certified.
But those would have been in the budget before. I think, I think ma- maybe the Spanish teacher could be in the, the bilingual, but maybe not. I just, so anyway, that's like, my question there is just, alright, we've gone through the function codes, I think we've talked about adding stuff, but just, just those, that plus five, that's an addition, um, from last year. In those two columns, especially led features and the bilingual, hearing impaired. And, and those, those are certainly valuable, uh, services. I'd just like to know at, at this level where they are. It doesn't have to be denied though. And I, I will say, if, if you look at the last year's budget, um, book, those two columns in particular, I think we're just combined together. Actually, I should like the breakout.
I do too.
It's better.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's nice to see.
Yeah.
Uh, every small thing, um, I just noticed it tonight, in the upper right corner, it says FY twenty five budget. That, that top column, that's just supposed to be FY twenty six.
That's right.
I just caught that, something we passed by a million times and not catch. Um, and then on, uh, four dash three, that's where it's the non-certified staff F E report. Um, and if I go down, this one's not in blue, but if sort of in the middle of the page, the subtitle be the subtotal, sorry, my other job. Subtotal, BOE budget funded, and you go across all the way to the right, and we get to the, uh, that's the next page. We get to the three thirty six point one. Last year's budget, uh, while I'm near proof last time, was three oh five point one. So that is up by thirty one positions. And, and you've mentioned this as we've gone through.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's additional tutors, like, had a net of plus eleven in the tutors column, which is that second column from the right.
We just added the other health, the nurses, that they, we didn't have them.
Yeah, that wasn't in there. But, but the nurses are, do reflect, that's like fifteen of them, of, of, of the spots, and then it would be sixteen.
And nurses aid.
So, so the nurses are half of this. So the tutors I had is up eleven from last year's budget. And then the classroom bus aids were up, uh, uh, twelve point five. Uh, I've got a question on what that, what really is a classroom slash bus aid, but I'll, I'll just, um.
I can answer it real quick.
Oh yeah, I'll just say this other part, um, the paraprofessional is, if that total is down, not much by, but, uh, one point seven. And I, I do have a concern, like strategically for us as a, as a school system. Are we shifting our workforce away from, um, uh, union paraprofessionals, uh, to non-union, I presume non-union tutor, classroom, and bus aids? Or are we shifting away from, uh, full-time to, to part-time? Um, and, and then that's so why, but, um, so anyway, those big changes, the tutors and the classroom bus aids, if you could just, I'll talk about that as well as.
So the bus aids, we had a hard time getting bus aids last year. And so we've done better this year in hiring them. So we, we do have the number of bus aids that we need. The classroom aids are really your kindergarten aids, um, that are with the kindergarten class or your, um, pre-K aids as well.
And, and maybe lunch.
In every.
Lunch, lunch aids too, or is that something separate?
Yeah, the lunch aids, if they're only for lunchtime.
And recess.
And recess, lunch and recess.
So this is all, that's all elementary.
Right. And then the part of the question that you were asking, Mike, about, um, part-time, sometimes if the way a para becomes part of the union is they need to be able to take an assessment to qualify. And, uh, if they haven't taken the assessment yet, or they're working on getting the assessment done, we are able to hire sub paras. And those sub paras start working for us and they're non-union, but as soon as we get them assessed and they are able to pass that test, what is it called? The.
Para Pro.
Para Pro. Then they become part of the union. And so it's kind of like getting them in, getting that training, getting them ready for that assessment. And then once they take the assessment, they're part of the union.
And, and that's part of grow your own.
It's kind of grow your own.
And, but, but that's separate from that, say, the tutors. Uh, those are distinct, the, the subs wouldn't be.
No, that, you, no, we have building subs and then we also have tutors. And tutors really, um, some of them are teachers or they're certified, they have a college education and, you know, and they are tutoring our kids. And a lot of them are, are EL tutors. We mostly have EL tutors. We have some SCL tutors, some math tutors and some literacy, but not merely what we had in, during COVID.
Of course. So could we, is there like a different blend? Uh, rather than just adding, uh, rather than exclusively adding on, um, say tutors, would there, could there be a different blend of adding on, uh, tutors and paraprofessionals? Cause the total paraprof, paraprofessional numbers is gonna go down. It, it's a concern I have. Like, is there, uh, there's some overlapping duties, uh, between, uh, tutors and paraprofessionals, even though they're, certainly their job descriptions are distinct. I was just wondering if there's a different blend that we could kind of accomplish the same educational goals with.
Well, we, we tried that during COVID when we couldn't find the paras, but that was really part of, um, you know, we really eliminated that because that was not, the paras weren't happy about that. Because they really wanted paras to do para work and tutors to do tutor work. So that's what we have going on now. And tutors work with small groups and they're instructional, you know, they instruct. And in a para situation, they really help provide the student everything they possibly need in all kinds of ways to, so they can access education and they support the child, but they're not necessarily tutoring the child. The teacher's still teaching or the special educator's still teaching and then they assist.
And then the increase, thank you, and then the increase in the classroom aids that is the need, uh, what's the need driving that? I mean, I, I can see it's important to have many bodies in kindergarten classrooms.
Yeah.
So our preschool programs enroll students through the early childhood assessment team. And often it's when they turn three. Um, or when they're referred to the district and we get to know them and evaluate them, which is a process. So we will add a part-time para as our enrollment increases. If a student needs it based on, you know, the severity of their disability. So we don't know when we're budgeting how many paras we're going to need because it's really based on enrollment.
But you do have some, some idea because they're, it's at, when they're three and then they're coming through this.
We don't know who's going to come in though. It's, 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 it's a, it's kind of a, um, the enrollment is hard to predict and so are their needs.
That makes sense. That was my last question. Oh, so I wasn't here at this part of the budget process last year, but I know there are many cuts due to our, our PES are going away. Um, is how, by say adding on, you know, eleven tutor positions and twelve and a half classroom slash bus aids. It seems like we're probably still below what was funded two years ago, but how.
We lost a hundred and twenty four point seven positions from that.
So, so this is, this is kind of inching back up.
Well, it's not even inching. I think it's based on need. And like I said out loud, when you have eight hundred kids coming in and seven hundred some going out each year, you've got a lot of needs shifting. So, um, and then when the kids come to us, if they already have an IEP, we honor that. And we bring them back to the committee, to the team with their parents to assess what are their needs? And what are the programs that we have available?
Thank you. I'm, I'm personally cautious about, um, adding workforce. Uh, but I, I do like to see that, you know, the, the certified teachers are being added in special ed, bilingual, hearing impaired, psychological, speech, special ed support services. And we're adding tutors and, and classroom bus aids. I would like to see us adding, uh, paraprofessionals as well that next. But, but it, it does seem, seem that the needs we've been talking about, closing achievement gaps, that's where the additional.
Right.
Staff are allocated.
Those are all, those are all highlighted in that PPT process and through a child's IEP. So everybody around the table figures out what those needs are for that child. So that's what's gonna drive us. And it can change all year long, based on every I, PPT, annual PPT that goes on. So we're constantly, you know, I've had, um, Denise and I have worked through adding several other paras because of the needs.
We also have a highly mobile, what, part of our population is mobile. So students leaving, students moving in, and really kind of, I think we addressed this last week, really kind of adjusting our workforce where the need is.
Thank you.
I, I just wanna kind of revisit, I guess, like, get a sense of the overall game plan here from here on out. Like, I mean, are, are we.
Start doing, looking at the budget.
Well, according to where we discussed last week, the idea for this meeting tonight was primarily to kind of talk about the overarching goals and what adjustment in the percentages we might want to try to attain. And then we're gonna drill down and do it systematically from function code to function code. That was my understanding from last week. And, and unless that's a misunderstanding, I'd welcome anyone to correct my, um, perception. So, so that being the case, I mean, I guess I would open the floor, or I'd, I'd be interested to hear people talk about, like, what are our goals for the, uh, overall percent increase? And what are our, um, priorities as far as like what we want to bolster? As far as, uh, you know, where do we want to see the allocations go within the budget, generally speaking?
And I'm just gonna remind you, you did ask for a principal's wish list, which you received. Yeah. Their priorities. So I had said, make sure you review that. And make sure you look at that budget ahead of time to say, what are some of those areas that you feel like could, we should look at to reduce?
Or increase.
Or increase.
Genus.
I just looked over here.
I can go out first.
Alright, who wants to start? You wanna start, Michael?
Oh, no.
No? Matthew?
I said I could. I don't.
I don't want to, but I will. I'm looking through this through the frame of, I don't wanna use the word mission, our goals. And I think the standardized testing reveals that there's a lot of work to be done. The teachers are not thrilled with the results, though the teachers are great teachers. Don't get me wrong. We have good teachers. I've been to lots of classrooms. I've been ter, I've been really impressed. But somehow, we're not getting the results that we want. And I was looking the other day, this may not be a fair place to go, but I, I looked one at the site budgets. And I saw that the per-student allocation on the site budgets at the elementary level was a hundred eighty one dollars and change. At the middle school level was two hundred and twenty dollars per student and change. And at Fitch High School, three ninety five per student and change. Now, I do realize that elementary school doesn't have electives. I do realize that elementary school doesn't have interscholastic sports. There's a reason that the Fitch High School budget per student is higher. So, uh, I think to just say equity demands it be equal is, is, is incorrect. That being said, we are investing a tremendous amount in the high school and none of it is wasted. None of it is wasted. We're, but the challenge is if we have kids who finish fifth grade and they're not able to do math, master an age-appropriate uh, science performance or English language performance, they're, I don't wanna say condemned, their chances of success are really impacted. So I would like to see us, to come back to what I would want, is to really ask the hard question of, should we be reallocating some of the funds we spend at the upper level to the lower grade level? There are always gonna be losers in this because if we take some money away from the high school, there will be less offering. But at some point, we just can't keep saying, well, we're gonna keep working on it, we're gonna keep working on it. We know that the problem starts in the elementary school because the results start in the elementary school. If we can catch these kids young, you know, Adrian talks about catching dyslexia early and how much that can save us by catching it early. If we can catch math early, if we can catch English language arts early, we will, but it's gonna take three or four years to work through. But can we have this discussion as we look through the budget items? Because this is our policy document. This is the board's set of priorities for what we want to have to the district. And if we can't, we're not gonna get there in a year or two, but if we can't begin to make some significant progress on academic performance at the elementary school level, I'm just flummoxed. That's it.
Uh, I just wanna thank Matt for bringing that up. That's, uh, in line with what I was going to comment on is, is I believe that, uh, we should, uh, seriously consider how we can reallocate funds in, in a way that, that, uh, enables the lower grade levels, um, you know, K through three in particular. And also, you know, four and five shortly, right after that as a priority of, uh, building up the fundamentals, you know, math, numeracy and literacy. Um, you know, if, if you, you, you need reading fundamentals, reading comprehension, uh, language comprehension, um, being able to read and write and manage numbers. Uh, without those foundational skills, um, there's gonna be gaps popping up all throughout. And, uh, my personal feeling is that, you know, when you have high achieving students up on, in the upper levels, upper grades. you know, those classes could be consolidated, uh, to, to some degree more easily than, uh, classes, where, uh, students may struggle more with the material. When students struggle with material, that's when behaviors start to arise. Also, like when the numbers as far as like, uh, ratios from teacher or professional staff, uh, to student are, you know, slanted upwards of twenty to one or, you know, uh, you know, twenty-five to two. That's a recipe for, for problems, uh, in my experience. So, you know, I think there, there's a worthwhile endeavor to look at ways we can bolster elementary education. Trying to reduce class sizes and support, or short of that, increase in class supports. So that the ratio of professional staff to student is decreased to a point where we can really focus on building fundamentals in numeracy and literacy. Um, and we do that, we may find ourselves doing better on the far end and not having to, to do so much, invest so much in remedial. It would be a long-term project, um, but I think, you know, we need to start thinking critically on that now. And overall, I think, uh, the six point five, uh, proposed percent increase overall, relatively speaking. I think that that's probably about the number we're going to end up at. Uh, the question is like where the money goes in, inside the budget. Which is why I'm very particularly interested in being very systematic on going through the function codes. So, I mean, if you look at the overall context of things with the overall, you know, inflation numbers and rising costs of electricity and all this and all that, plus like the standard contractual, uh, raises, uh, increased cost of benefits. You know, a, a five and then looking across the region too, like we're seeing five to sixes around a lot. And as you noted earlier, um, one point five percent of our increased Board of Ed budget is, is represented by the, this is the first budget that we are fully incorporating the nurses into the budget on the front end. As was noted and has been discussed a lot, you know, there's communication issues. You know, we, over the past year, we did transition the nurses from the town into the board. The budget that was presented to the town last year, the FY twenty-five budget did not have the nurses incorporated into that budget. We made that work over the past year. And this was, so that's, this was that transitional year. This is the first year that we are now intentionally and consciously putting the nurses in. So that, that again, it's a zero sum for the taxpayer. That's the most important thing. So I think we do need to kind of, you know, put a little, you know, a point spread type differential. And when we look at that six point five number, in reality, it's more like a five point zero percent increase.
Revenue that's come in that looks better than a half.
Five point four. Five point three six.
Okay. Yeah, roughly. This is all just like.
Benefits are proportional.
These, these are, these are broad numbers. Either way, like my, my, you get my point.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I think, but I'm just very interested in, in, uh, working with this budget in as specific way as possible to, to look at how the numbers are allocated within the budget and making sure that we have the structures in place to follow through with what we commit to as and what we approve as a board.
I want to keep track of this, like closer track than what happened last year.
Appreciate that.
I want it on a Google Doc that everybody can see.
Microphone. Sorry.
Thank you. Um, I love the idea of, uh, investing in our elementary students. But I just want to caution when we, um, look to make cuts, if, if that's what we're talking about at the high school, that they have, uh, graduation requirements. And so you always have to be aware of what the impact is there. I believe that, uh, Fitch High School, our students have twenty-seven credits to graduate. And so if you're looking to make reductions either programmatically or in staff, you really do have to be very careful about what those impacts could be if you're, you know, going to shift in some way or some kind of reduction. You have to be careful not to cut something that would impact, uh, students being able to graduate or meet, not only a requirement that is put in based on our policy, but something that would be required by the State Department of Education. So just, just warning there.
Thank you.
Okay. Jay? Jay?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. So first of all, I just want to, uh, quickly note that, um, uh, overall, the superintendent's budget has not really changed. I do know that I had made the suggestion that we take all the benefits out of the functions. But we all know that those did not directly relate to the functions to begin with. It was, it was a way of allocating across all the functions, but, it's, it's a number that moves because depending on who is working in that function, they may or may not have benefits. They might have life changes. So it really created a lot of static and a lot of people spent an awful lot of time trying to determine if the benefit line was appropriate for the function, which is why I suggested we just move it away and put it into, you know, rightly a district wide. So I, I don't see that as a material change to the fact that the bottom line stays the same. It just makes it easier for us to, uh, concentrate on the lines in the function over which we have control. And so, um, I don't see how that keeps us from starting to talk about what we want to do to adopt this as the board's budget. So I'll start. And I'm going to break a, a longstanding convention when I say that based on the fact, yes, we, we do collective bargaining. And yes, we negotiated a, uh, contract with our paras a few years ago, but things have changed. The, uh, economy has changed and the, uh, the entire, uh, working, uh, environment for paras has changed. And so I'm going to recommend that we put additional money in the budget so that we can better compensate our paras. So there I've said it, and I think we need to put our money where our mouth is. They are very, uh, important to our students. I don't think anyone who's making, um, higher wages in the district would begrudge them, uh, an increase. And so I would support that. In meeting with the GEA and the AGSA, uh, they, uh, would like to see an increase in special education teachers. So I think we need to look very carefully at that. How are we going to pay for it? Well, we did say we were going to go through, uh, in an orderly fashion. I realize we cannot look at every function in the depth we have over the past six weeks. We need to be strategic. I say we go in order, but if there's areas where people have special, interest or believe there's an opportunity, we look at those. But at the end of the day, we go to the town council and the RTM and we say, this is what we need to educate our children. And it's not a, a number that I'm willing to, to put out tonight as the be all and end all. We just need to be able to defend the increase, uh, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the students. And so those are my first two ideas. And so I'll yield to hear what the next suggestion is.
Thank you, Jared. Andrea.
Bottom line is the bottom line. And we've been asking Susan to make all kinds of changes in the narrative on that side. And, and she did that. And now we're saying, well, you did that, but why didn't you do this? And that's not what we asked for. And the bottom line is the bottom line. I don't know what the problem here is. I've never been on a board like this before. This is embarrassing.
James?
There are other stuff that we had asked. Um, I'll get into like our total goals, right? But in one of our meetings, it was.
But that, but that's where we wanted the total goals.
Okay. So, okay, so for total goals, right? Like, we need to improve the math scores. We know we made an investment in language arts last year. So I feel like we need to make a corresponding investment in math. And I know Adrian, you made a case, maybe not math, but maybe language arts again, because if they can't read, then it's, it's not going to help them with math. So either, either scenario, I'm okay. But we need to make an investment in the elementary school, either in language arts or math. I, um, we also need to make investments like in the high school where, um, they have mandated items from the state that's not funded. So we need to make sure that that's covered, right? Um, the business finance professionals, we need to make sure that our schools have the right amount of nurses. There was one in particular that may be short based on the number of students. We also need to take into account like, um, tutors, right? Because, um, we need to make sure that the kids who are behind need to get like the tutoring service they need. I know there are several, um, schools like in that principals list that needs tutors. So I'm willing to make investments. That's why I was highly, I'll be honest, I was highly disappointed that we didn't get a clean book because I was willing to go through, make cuts in some places so that we can invest in others. Or maybe even go up higher than what Susan, um, this board is here, um, to make sure that we can provide the best education to the students of this district with what we can afford. And, um, we are not going to know that, right? So we can just decide this is what we think is best. And if another governing body after us comes back and says, you need to cut, then we need to re-decide, but we can at least make a, a full-fledged that these are the things that our students need. And that may not be like the most um, straightforward that I think it's the most straightforward thing. This is, this is what we need to enhance the scores and benefit the students. And I'm not saying be gross about it and ask for like twenty percent. I think seven percent based on the history of what we've been funded in the past. I mean, net, it came out Dean, your math two point three six, I think at one point. Um, total net difference from our base point, a two percent increase over a ten-year period, that's lower than inflation. Our kids deserve better than that. When you compare us to the DURG, um, to, we're lower, um, for the district reference. Like I said, I don't want us to be gross, but I want us to be mindful of the investments. So I like listed a couple of items where I'm willing to make investments. I support what Jay had mentioned. If we are looking, um,
Jane, can you bring your mic closer?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. And if we're looking for places at the most senior level places to cut, I've said this before, we're probably going to get arrows on me. But, um, we may have too many pathways, right? Let's pick three or four, do it well, be the best instead of having whatever that, right? Because those are extra teachers that we have that we can redeploy and making something. So, um, let's refocus, rejigger. I know, um, you know, IBAP, um, the EC credits, that's all being looked at. So let's look at some of the other, you know, I saw an allocation here for point five Latin. Bean and I, I think there's no Latin teacher, so I don't know why we have a point five allocation for Latin. But, um, anyway, that's, I'm willing to make investments and I, I, I'll go out there and say, and I don't care if I get crucified.
Yeah, a couple of things just to clear the board. Uh, what I mentioned before about the, the FTEs not apparently matching. It's amazing because I have a whole column of numbers here and I'm bound to just make a mistake somewhere along the way. I added up when I looked through all the, all the functions. I came up with a total of two hundred ninety-one point six FTEs, all the one oh ones add up to two ninety-one point six. When I flip back page, I think four dash two, that's exactly what's there for certified staff. So even though the elementary doesn't match up, in total it matches up. So I find that interesting. So it's not like we've got, you know, they, they don't match up in elementary because we have extra bodies, so to speak. All the bodies add up to the same numbers. It's just they're not allocated the same way among the schools apparently, but I, I could be looking at it the wrong way. Uh, the average, what I mentioned before, the elementary seemed to be going up like six and a half percent. My aggregate numbers, I mean, assuming the two twenty, two ninety-one point six isn't much different from last year. And correct me if I'm wrong, the, the average increase just shows you what kind of an artifact of statistics this is, is one point one percent. So when you add up all the salaries last year and this year for the same FTEs, now maybe the FTEs are radically different, but not so different that would, it would have yielded a, you know, six and a half percent increase. So something interesting is going on. I think there may be too few bodies for the dollar figures under eleven oh one, but leave that aside for the moment, going to, uh, policies. I'm with Jay on this one. I think we do need to be at least competitive to be able to get paras in. And I think there's room for that. And I say this, uh, for the following reason. Yes, it's true, uh, without taking into account, uh, benefits, the benefits section, uh, which again, I don't think is any different than everybody else. I think it just, which make the, the pool is the pool. I get a five point three percent increase, not a six point five percent increase if you factor in the nurses, which we now have to factor in. So, you know, yay us, it's five point four percent. But at the same time, I didn't hear it specifically mentioned, but because of the grants we're getting in, and I don't know how sustainable this is, but at least for this year, if those grants are for real, our proposed, or actually say the superintendent's proposed ask in terms of tax dollars, the town portion, not including federal, not including state, not including the, the grants, is less by, by a couple of million dollars at least than it was last year. So, you know, do we have room in there for, uh, for bumping up some pay? We do. If that's what it takes to retain people and retain good people, then so be it. Now, I'm all for increasing, uh, getting, getting kids on board earlier. Uh, and I'll start with the easy one, which is remedial. We've got three point two million dollars for remedial instruction. And when I look at the, the, the bodies, the FTEs allocated for that, you know, the bulk of them are in elementary. So as far as remedial, uh, resources go, we've got two, twenty-nine point six FTEs for that, twenty-four point six of whom are allocated to the elementary schools. So a much greater percentage than is represented by the actual population of the elementary schools is, is, is there. So we have, we apparently have, you know, um, already a reallocation, if you will, of the remedial staff for the elementary. Now, as far as regular instruction goes, smaller class sizes early, yes, you can do some larger class sizes in, uh, in, in, in the higher grades, especially with the kids who are doing well. That's as a general rule, uh, that's, that's, that's reasonable. There is of course, as we know, a limit to how many kids you could put in a classroom, both physically and under the teacher's contract. So, um, and when, when you get down to the other end, if you could say, well, let's take the elementary school class and reduce it by, I don't know, come up with a number, by half. Wouldn't it be nicer if you had fifteen kids, uh, fifty, ten kids in a class or twelve, uh, twelve kids in a class? Do we deploy, redeploy teachers, you know, certification, uh, leaving that aside? Can we deploy teachers to elementary? Great. Do we have the classroom space? I don't know whether we have the classroom space to significantly cut. And when you start to slice and dice, you really have to do whole numbers. Add how many whole number teachers to the elementary school to say, we need to add six more, ten more elementary school teachers to cut down the, the, the class size. This is aside from remedial. This is regular instruction at the elementary level to lower the class sizes. Do we have the, do we have the, uh, the classroom sizes? Do we have the, do we have the teachers? Could they be redeployed or are we hiring more teachers? These are the things we have to look at because in general, yes, smaller class sizes, more, uh, more, more attention paid to the kids in general. As far as remedial goes, either we hire more remedial people, but as in our three point two million dollar remedial budget, the ball. the bulk of them are going to elementary anyway. So uh, maybe we need more there, maybe, I don't know. Um, the other thing I I'm I'm curious about um, has to do with the number of certified teachers we have and then the figure we have for subs, which is just under a million dollars. Do we have a problem with not, it's either not finding teachers, whether using the subs to fill in for spots that are open, or there's subs to fill in for teachers that are out? What kind of an absentee problem do we have? Are people tied up personally, tied up health-wise? They just don't want to come in, and I don't blame them, honestly, if you've ever even just chaperoned kids, you know? Um, so I can't say whether the million dollars for subs, and I forget what we're paying the subs, but.
I think you could like one twenty-five, one fifty a day.
Yeah, so you know, how many days of subs is this? How many teachers, how many, you know, full-time teachers does this represent?
So the building subs are really what we're hiring. It's very hard to get a day-to-day sub.
Right.
And the building subs become part of the school community, so they're very valuable.
Right.
But we did, we did take that number down last year, as you remember, because of, you know, some were paid in our best, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, so do we have a problem with with uh, teacher absenteeism and what is that problem?
So the the subs that we have in the building, if there's some maternity leave, and we've had quite a few of those across the district, then they are out for their time and the building sub covers them. So you, or you're waiting to get a position filled, like that Spanish teacher, and you've had someone cover that. Um, but then you have to realize that I don't know how your family did before and after and during vacation, but there was RSV, there was flu. There was everything you can imagine. People are still getting sick. I just got another COVID shot.
I guess.
So, yeah.
Yeah. My 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 question is actually, uh, frankly, partially and maybe mostly born out of uh, out of ignorance. I can't tell. When I look at an almost million dollar figure, I'm thinking, a million dollars, that's a lot of money. Now, but I can't tell just by looking at it, whether a million dollars is a reasonable number. The same thing would be true with remedial education. If you were to go to the average person and say, you know, by the way, uh, we got so many kids and we're spending three point two million dollars on remedial education, their first reaction is, what was all the other money for? But maybe that's an average number. Maybe if you go from here to Oshkosh, you're gonna find the same sort of proportion. It's just, you're always gonna have a number in there for remedial. You're always gonna have a number in there for uh, for substitutes, and this is just a normal number. So I can't tell, but I'm raising the issue, do we have a problem? Um, you know, with, are we paying too much for substitution, for substitute teachers? Uh, or are we paying about, because you're always gonna have the need for substitute teachers. I just can't tell, it's just a, it's a big number and, you know.
And we have some of our substitute teachers who, because, uh, let's say a para gets sick for school and it's little notice that you have to put a sub in the room because that child does need one-on-one coverage. So you do have them doing classroom coverage, you have them doing all kinds of coverage.
Right.
So they really are another pair of hands on deck.
Again, I'm saying, this this could very well be, hey, it's this is what you get when you have a normal population of human beings engaged in this type of work. People are just gonna be absent once.
Little children and big children.
Right. Or or maybe there's something else going on. Maybe there's, maybe there's another cause of absenteeism. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, for now.
All right.
No, I'm wait, I'm on second turn, so.
All right.
It's your first round on this one.
All right, um, I'm, I'm gonna start with the class size that Fitch, because I I brought something up that needs uh, to make kind of a point, but it needs a little bit more clarity. Um, and I brought up some IB classes that have um, low class sizes. What I didn't get to is adding all of those classes, if we could push those, if we could cut a few classes, um, just individual class hours. It would total maybe um, six classes that we could save. So this is um, maybe one teacher in total, but it's spread out among every subject. So we can't cut a tenth of a teacher or something like that. So, so um, I just don't want people to have the impression that we are wasting a lot. It was just an example of where hopefully we can, um, you know, push some of those class sizes up and 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 maybe um, use that staff to support children in other ways, you know, in the short term. Then maybe we can grow our IB programs in the long term.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I just wanted to kind of say that, that there's, there's not, it, it was a statement about some, some small class sizes, but there's not a lot of meat there. Like, there's not any real or or very much real savings for us. Um, hopefully there can just be increased benefit by, um, you know, with additional support. Um, I would, um, you know, at this point, I mean, I I I feel like last year in our bester, we we kind of knew that this was gonna happen. But all of that staff, I mean, our needs changed from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. And all of that staff became part of the needs of the district. And we went through a lot of zero percent increases. And that staff helped support those zero percent increases. So it looked like we could run it at school more efficiently, but we just had a lot more support to help teachers out in running without having increases. And at the end of that, we got rid of those staff that we had become, that are, were needed. Um, and now we're paying the price. I mean, I think that everyone agrees that there are not enough tutors, that paras, we don't have enough paras. And very likely, the 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 reason is, is they need to get paid a little bit more. Um, so maybe we need to budget some more for that. Um, uh, so I I want to go back to what Jay said. I I strongly support um, putting some, some money in financing for um, for some way to increase our para staff, so we can have those positions filled. Um, the special ed teacher increase, um, uh, you know, when we get there, I mean, I do believe that we need more special ed teachers in the elementary level at least. Um, I don't know um, exactly about the middle school and high school levels, but um, I think we've heard in the community that we need special ed teachers, heard from the principals that we need special ed teachers. Um, and those of us who know people in the community probably realize that we need more special ed support. And i- i- and that can happen in two ways. Um, Dean mentioned, you know, function twelve seventy remedial instruction. Um, and I, you know, I'd made a a comment about if we, if we can help those, you know, children at a young age learn to read, not just dyslexic kids. It actually, I think we should understand how the science of reading stuff works. It's, it's something like thirty or forty percent of kids need that type of thing. And if we can give them that extra help, um, like it will benefit our district in the long run, and more importantly, it will benefit those students in the long run. They will have better outcomes, whether they stay in our district or move to another district. We have, we're gonna have kids that will um, achieve higher, you know, when they finish school and possibly um, get better jobs or go to college that otherwise wouldn't if they don't learn to read or learn to read well at those young ages. So I'm gonna be in support of adding um, some teachers in remedial instruction. Um, so that um, we have more room for tier-two instruction for those kids that need it in reading and math in elementary. Um, what I would like to ask of Susan, um, you know, um, clearly, it's not easy to find efficiencies anywhere, if there are any that can be found. Um, you know, I I hate to say it, Fitch, but if there are any at Fitch, um, I mean, I I I've looked at the, like Matthew was talking about the numbers and how we spend more at Fitch, um, than we do the elementary schools. And um, I don't feel like we're spending too much at Fitch. We're just not balancing Fitch. So um, if you go on the state report cards, um, you can go and look at all of the high schools, how much different high schools in our area spend it, or how much um, different districts spend on high school students. And I think the report card said we spend somewhere around twenty-one thousand five hundred per student at high school. That's actually, you know, pretty similar to a lot of the other districts around us. Where we aren't spending the money is in elementary school. So I, so I think this, you know, our district being ten percent below the state average, we were pretty close to the state average ten or twelve years ago. Um, we have just been falling in, in where we've been taking the hit is in elementary school. So I, I don't know where, I mean, we've spent a lot of time on this budget and um, I have a couple of ideas where we might be able to gain some efficiencies. Um, but I don't, I don't see that those efficiencies are gonna make up for the, for the real need that we have for our kids. Um, so. So that's my piece for now. Thank you.
Uh, Mike, um, you'll go back to the night.
Thank you. Um, so thank you. I I agree largely with what Adrian said. I would like us as a board uh, to go through the um, exercise of trying to find efficiencies, because as as we all know, it's not an unlimited pool of money that we can have, even though the needs are great. And I think if we did have an unlimited pool of money, we would find good ways to to spend that. Um, I'm, and I'm, I'm, while I could see that we want to add certain areas of capacity and uh, capabilities, I'm hesitant to see us um, uh, have a larger increase than the six point five percent that we have. I in fact, I'd like this to see if we can get it, uh, see if it's possible to get it down. Um, in the, you know, the five-point somethings range. It's not gonna be the five-point low, it's gonna be a five-point high range, I think. Uh, because of the, so the 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 al- already clearly necessary increases that that have to happen. Um, and uh, but so some ways, I think we could target that um, uh, exercise of looking for efficiencies is anywhere that um, something was previously grant-funded and now is coming into the BOE town side of budget. Let's look at that. I'm not saying that they shouldn't be brought in, but um, maybe just to bring everything uh, back right away, for instance. Um, uh, one area, obviously, they mentioned is a big change is the uh, the in previous years, we've had the DOD supplemental funds, which is roughly uh, five hundred thousand a year. And a lot of that went to uh, true needs for for computing and and other other equipment. But um, maybe we just don't, don't bring that all back this year. And that's one idea. Uh, the other idea is we have the main budget page, we're gonna have the roughly a hundred thousand in contingency. Um, and I can see the need for it based on just our our experiences uh, this year. As things come up with property loss and everything, but um, I was thinking, if we are at, if we, we do need to add in an extra nurse to support Sacred Heart that's required by law. Uh, that's probably kind of ballpark a hundred thousand when benefits are included. So I would say trade the contingency line for the um, uh, to support the nurse need at Sacred Heart. So instead of going up to six point five eight percent increase, now we're at six point five, then work from there. Uh, so, so I do think that's important, a role that we have as a board of ed and as um, other uh, town bodies have as well. Uh, equally important, maybe actually more so really, is make sure that we're uh, supporting the needs of of the students. And um, as has been brought up, our per pupil costs are are quite low compared to the state average or um, the towns in the area or 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 district or representative group. Um, and then something that I didn't fully appreciate until I got on the board is that our student population, one way or another, and sometimes more than one way, is roughly half high needs. And high needs, needs a high level of support, and we're doing it um, with less from year to year. So we just, we we need to be, uh, go through, I think we have to go through the efficiency exercise and be strategic and make sure that we're, we're applying the funds uh, where we can. I think this, this budget that we have here is a good start, um, uh, to taking our next steps as a board.
Thanks.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to express my appreciation for uh, Jay, Dean, Adrian, um, and others that I know that think this way, but haven't said it yet tonight. But uh, as far as increasing the uh, pay for paras and putting that in the budget, uh, I definitely am also in favor of looking at ways we can do that. Uh, I did, I remember bringing it up last year and um, you know, there was a lot of pushback on that. Um, but now it seems like there may be the the will is there, so that that is good to hear. Um, our starting wage in the current contract is about two dollars less than um, areas in the region. Uh, you know, Waterford starts about nineteen dollars fifty-two cents. Ledyard is seventeen, New London is um, eighteen dollars thirty-six. Norwich eighteen forty-five, Monfill nineteen twenty-eight. Um, so, and also we need to consider seniority, you know, recruitment and retention. Um, so, you know, we need a better start rate, and also we need to consider those that have been with our district for quite some time. And uh, so when there's a, there's an increase at the start rate, there should also be a commensurate kind of uh, across-the-board bump for those who have been with us for a very long time. Um, so uh, now, when we, when I brought it up last year, there were the, some of the pushback that occurred was having to deal with the contract. You know, the contract that's been signed, so um, you know, I'm I'm the budget is one thing, so we can put the money in the budget, but we also need to be mindful of what the process is after that, to make sure that we can deliver that money into those people that we've allocated it for. So um, I would look forward to those conversations as well, uh, when when the time comes. Um, but uh, I definitely think that's, that's a worthwhile endeavor. And paras are needed all over the place. They can provide, they can help uh, you know, compensate for the the fact that maybe we don't have the classrooms to break down the class sizes to like, you know, the ratio we want, but we can increase professional staff in the room in such a way that it diminishes the the burdens on on the the main teacher with a lot of support staff. And it can help also address some of the remedial needs down low in the elementary grades. Um, so I definitely would look forward to those conversations. Thank you.
Matthew?
Two things, I had, uh, this is a board responsibility, but I'd like to argue that this is also a a district-wide responsibility, and there may be some very good ideas from our employees at every level. They may not individually make a lot of money, but it will increase ownership of this process. And you know, if we're able to scratch a little here and a little there, we may be able to pick up one or two people. So I would uh, ask the superintendent to consider whether it would be worthwhile putting out some sort of notice that we're really looking for feedback on ways that we can find some economies. Uh, whether people sign their names or don't sign their names, it's the ideas we're looking for. Uh, the other piece is, I understand that we're projecting six million dollars from uh, supplemental DOD, and I understand the reasoning for it, because we did get that amount this past year. Uh, that may come back to bite us. Uh, hopefully we'll get seven or eight. We won't fight it.
Um, we have been getting more each year, as I've pointed out.
Absolutely. That's, that's absolutely true. But we have a uh, a new administration that whether you agree with them or not, has been very clear about some of their intentions. And we need to be mindful of that. Thank you.
Um, well, I I definitely do want to just express a little bit of concern as far as like the number of meetings that we have set up. Um, I'm not sure what the um, I was looking at Tuesday, the eighteenth as a possible, um. Oh, that's right, sorry. My, I I work on a different calendar in my district. Yeah. All right, so never mind that. Uh, but then we do it, so we get the Wednesday, Thursday, the nineteenth, the twentieth. I guess that would leave the thirteenth of this week as one possible extra date we could squeeze in there if needed. And I'm also curious to know that, you know, if by some reason we're not satisfied uh, or comfortable or confident in voting for a budget on the twenty-fourth, what's the process then? Because we have till the twenty-eighth.
Till the twenty-eighth.
Right, so we could add some extra meetings at the end. Um, after the twenty-fourth, if somehow we're not able to get there. Okay. So um, I guess, is there any interest in in, or were there, is there any conflict? And is there any interest in adding a meeting for the thirteenth of this week?
I say every night.
Yeah, I say skip it too. Yeah, because they're out Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and four meetings a week is enough. Three meetings is enough.
Yeah, we have five. Thank you.
So we could add it on to the end.
Yeah.
If we don't finish by the twenty-fourth, then at the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth.
All right. And also, I guess, along with formatting, is it possible, I understand, like, printing paper is is incredibly burdensome and expensive. Um, however, the electronic version is a way to get updated electronic versions to match, so that we can at least.
It's still processed because they, the. It's still processed because they, the way that is paginated, it takes a lot of time for the staff to put the narrative page with the other pages and to enumerate them. So I can get you electronic probably faster than I can get you paper. And I'd be happy to do that. Um, but um, like Jay had said, the numbers are really the same. We have got someone working on the narrative and I, Ray had just texted me and said, that's close to finish and I'll check with him tomorrow. And then um he also said they were in the middle of moving that health benefits to that one line under the district wide.
Right.
So that that will help you to see the budget too in its entirety. So
That that I think would be the, the most fundamental change would be that because that does change the math on every page.
Right.
Um, and you know, that's a lot for us to unpack on.
Maybe one more hard copy.
Can you throw a quick, quick comment?
Are you done?
Yeah, I'm good for now.
I was just gonna say, if we're making that kind of a change, is it possible to put the percent changes after each individual line item? When you look at the function codes, there's the percent increase at the at the sum of each section. Um, and and I'm just asking this now because I feel like there might get complicated.
Oh, give me a, for instance, take me to a page.
All right. So let's let's start on the first one. I think if if this is an Excel document, um, it might be easy. But I don't want to, I don't want to guarantee that. Um, so if we go to five dash seven. Certified teachers, line one oh one. All right, Matt, for this to go quickly.
That's right. Okay.
So we have a percent change at the end of this, at the end.
Right. You want to percent all the way through.
Yeah. So hopefully that's just a little Excel modification on the column. Um. Or we can just have Dean do the whole thing itself.
Exactly.
With his calculator.
I will add.
That's an easy.
Okay, we we have a, we have an Excel superstar.
All right, great.
He's young, but he's courageous.
Uh, that might make it easier if if lines are disappearing.
Okay.
And something that's still there, it might just be easier to follow.
So the team, remember, there was like, I think seventeen.
I can't hear you, Jay.
This is for the team. Um, there were three um function codes. I think it was seventeen hundred twenty-three X. Whatever it is, it started out as the superintendent's budget and then it got um shifted into three different codes. Yeah. So do we want to restate? So that when we're looking at the new function codes, it's showing what would have been there in twenty-four and twenty-five. I think that was an ask, but I'm not.
As you remember that.
If um, if we agreed upon that.
Yeah, that was going to be in.
Okay.
Um, we received an email from the town manager over the weekend and it had a a number of uh anticipated questions or clarifications or documentation.
Yep.
Um, I read through those and and I do appreciate the town manager taking the effort to send those out. Um, they seem to reiterate a number of questions that we already asked and uh documentation we're asking for as far as uh full-time equivalents. Uh, so it seems like they, you know, he's tracking our meetings pretty closely. And that's appreciated, you know, um, because we're all looking for the same thing. We're looking for a budget that is, you know, sound and well-targeted. Um, so is there, uh, how are we standing on those requests and and you know, when those are ready to be shared with the town manager, I assume that they'll be shared
I'll share.
With the board as well.
They were answered today.
Okay.
I just have to get them to them.
Okay.
For that paper.
Great.
We did answer them today. Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So ju- just quickly, I know, uh, especially before in this meeting too, there's the the change tracker. Has that been started yet? Because if the nurses have been, uh, the extra nurse has been added for Sacred Heart. Um, is there, has that change tracker been added? Started yet?
We have, we have it ready to go.
Good.
And we're going to put that on the nurse from Sacred Heart.
And and I'll just give you four, I think four that, um, one we mentioned, that's the nurse's uh function code twenty-one thirty, which which is what we're just talking about. There's a small one that we mentioned from previous meetings. Um, uh, twelve fifty is blind K twelve. Uh, Denise mentioned that there was, there's just a little bit of money in there, but it should be zero because the the state supports that entirely. It it's not, it's not a, it's not a big deal in terms of the the dollar amount, believe me, it's several hundred dollars. Um, uh, twenty-one twenty guidance, six through twelve. Uh, it looked in terms of the FTE chart, we have the same number of guidance counselors, but the question, I think I brought it up, it looked like in the budget numbers that there's roughly a hundred thousand dollars less. So it looked like there's a mismatch somehow um in the budget numbers that it looked like there's a cut in the numbers, but not FTE. So that's twenty-one twenty, just to take a look at that.
I can think of, Mike, is when we're hiring new counselors, when someone has retired or resigned.
Yeah.
Um, their salaries are different.
Yeah, that's a big change though, right? So so twenty-one twenty, just start that one for me, please. And then the other one I wasn't sure about, I just had a note when I was looking through uh twenty-one ten, that social work. Um, uh, I had a, there's an increase in dollar amount that seemed too much for the listed, I think is half FTE increase and that 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 one may well be correct and but but it just, it just looked like is um uh too much there. Uh, so so those are my four.
Okay.
I said it was going to be quick. That wasn't as quick as I thought, though.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mike.
And I just want to say, I'm for elementary education. I said this from very beginning that we should, I always said that we have to build a strong foundation. So I'm really in support of uh looking at elementary ed and seeing if we can do so. I'm for a power in each elementary ed classroom from grade K to three. But that one there, but um, I agree with that and I agree with um doing something for the parents. Either give them incentive or up their salary, but really doing something for the parents. But I think um, all school districts are having trouble hiring parents.
They are.
It's not just Rock. It's, it's statewide. And just be careful that if you don't, if you solve one problem, you don't cause a problem somewhere else. So be mindful of it too. You know what I mean? Dean?
So I mentioned this, I keep mentioning this, only because I I didn't realize there would be a a sort of a negative reaction when I first brought it up, and I think you brought it up at the same meeting, which is this this seemingly, you know, large percentage. I I added up the former FDEs. And I did, I corrected my averages. So we wind up with a twenty-five to twenty-six average change in salary of just over two percent. But if anybody out there, again, I've said this before, is thinking, oh, that teachers are getting a six percent increase. It's a two percent increase. Just if you'll just look at the salary line, never mind the the rest of it, just the salary line, it's just over a two percent in the aggregate increase. Um, I took the liberty of I look at the numbers, I said, okay, how many elementary school kids do we have? Two thousand one hundred and forty-five. We're saying there's an average of twenty kids in a class. That comes to a hundred and seven and a quarter classrooms. Um, if you were to go down to, say, fifteen kids in a class, how many more classrooms would you need to spread those kids out? You need a hundred and forty-three classrooms for that. That's an additional thirty-five classrooms. Do we actually have that space? That's the thing. I would like to see fifteen kids or more adults. Right.
Northeast CK, um, Charles Barnum are full to the brim, like there is no more space and Thames River and Mystic River, you know. Um, they have those specialized programs, so a lot of those classrooms are being used for the specialized. So there's still not a lot of wiggle room. They might have a class and the Grant Mill had nothing.
I I can tell you my experience and I'm I'm not going to say how old I am, but when I was in kindergarten, I distinctly remember there were two women in the classroom. Now, it's not like we have thirty kids or something like that. There may have been twenty or something like that, but there were two women. You never saw that again in one through whatever. Uh, so the idea of having two people in the classroom uh is a sound one, at least for the very early grades. And that's where you, that's where, that's where people kick off. You got to get them oriented correctly by by, I'd say, by by grade three.
Yeah.
So on um Wednesday, we hope to get a clean budget book because I don't want to start the meeting where we started it tonight.
I don't either.
Okay. So especially the gravities updated. Um. I don't know if you can get it to us before Wednesday, which is tomorrow, Tuesday, so or we just have it
By nine AM.
Meeting on Wednesday. Would you say that?
Nothing.
Your time joke.
Yeah.
I'm incorrigible, never mind.
Yeah, there's an ill time to attempt at humor.
So if you don't get it tomorrow, we definitely need it on me at the meeting. So we can start off on a more positive note and um looking at the budget.
All right.
Right?
And um, one thing along those lines, I I would just like, um, one of the things we asked for, like, were some detail, like breakouts underneath, like the positions to get some sense of like, you know, if we wanted to increase a part-time position to a full-time position, what numerically would that actually be? You know, so salaries for positions.
From his end. So if you have that request, he's able to do that. You know, we could give you kind of an estimate of what that would be.
Real time?
Yeah.
So if we're making a vote, we say, well, I add one FTE or subtract one FTE, he can say it's going to be ninety thousand dollars with benefits or something.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then he'll be available for Wednesday and and onwards for the work.
Ray, are you still with me?
No. Yes.
Are you waving it to say goodbye to all of us? Are you waving to add to your two cents?
If you like, I can share the tracker that I've been, as they've been speaking, I've been trying to, I've been trying to keep up with my
Oh, thank you.
Um, but right now, if the only thing I missed was they were mentioning adding elementary teachers. I don't know how many, and I'm using an average of about seventy, seventy-five thousand uh for teachers. Uh, subs, I don't know how many, so I didn't add that in. But if I add the nurse in, I I put five paras at a a total of about a hundred thousand. I put two remedial instructors at one sixty. I uh put in a sped teacher at eighty thousand. I also reduced the contingency by a hundred. Now I reduced the IT equipment. All total, your budget right now is ninety-seven, no, excuse me, ninety-three, seven, sixty-two, four, nineteen. Or an increase of five million, eight oh three, nine, thirty-five, six point six percent.
Without taking anything away?
Well, he reduced the contingency.
Oh, you reduced. Oh, I didn't hear that part. Okay.
I reduced the contingency and I reduced, which I'm not, I'm not crazy about the IT equipment because we robbing Peter to pay Paul this year because you didn't have that four, five hundred thousand from DOD.
Yeah. But that that also causes me to say that whatever we talk about here, I've really got to go back to the director or the principal to make sure they can live without or live, you know, what it is that they, you know, are thinking so that, you know, they're leading their schools, they're leading their departments. So I do have to, you know, make sure that it's something we can do.
And and also.
Whatever you recommend.
Yeah, and also say, look, my comments, those are my comments, not the will of the board. So don't don't trust me with such power.
Um, so that was an awesome one to to share that Google.
Yeah, we have the Google Doc.
So we would be get, we get a link to it and we can view it.
Yeah.
I I I assume that we would not have editing powers, just you. Right. Of course, and that's what I would encourage. No, I don't want the responsibility. Um.
So, Ray, can you share that with me so I'll have it? Will you share it back?
I will.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm making a motion right now to go into executive session. It's eight thirty. Floyd's waiting for us.
Okay.
And I'm inviting um Denise, you want to come in?
Yep.
Denise Du Little and Floyd Dugis and Superintendent Austin, they come into this executive session. Uh, you, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose abstentions. We're going into um Susan's office for the executive session.
Have a good night, all.
You have to state the reason for the executive session.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, um, we're going to, thank you, thank you, thank you. We're going into the executive session to discuss pending claims. Um, Irene Lynch.
Thank you.
All right, um, we are now having a session and what is it, nine forty-six, nine forty-seven? And um, we had a good discussion and we came back and we have a motion that the board's going to vote on. And Matt Shulman will read the motion.
I move we authorize board counsel to conduct a preliminary inquiry into the allegations asserted by Ms. Lynch to determine whether a full investigation is required.
Second, Thomas.
Second, oh. We're supposed to keep them. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Oppose, abstentions, carry, one, two, seven, nine of us, nine to zero. And go ahead, Matt.
Okay, uh, we have in our packet a page, I don't know if it wrote, which shows the budget history. Uh, a percentage of budget increase each year. Uh, I went and was kind of curious as to how that compared with the Consumer Price Index of Inflation. So I have a new chart that I'd like us to consider. First part is I done a chart that has that piece plus the CPA for each year. It totals the amount of the seven years worth of budgets. It averages the percentage of the budget increase and it averages the percentage of the CPI over the seven years. There's a differential of one point five eight percent uh annual over the, the CPI is three point six three percent. The average budget increase was two point oh five percent, a difference of one point five eight. Over the seven years had our budget been at the CPI rate rather than what it was, we would have had eight million, eight hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars more than we did. That's equivalent to about a million and a quarter a year. I have some personal um commentary on the bottom. I guess my question is, we shouldn't be talking about it amongst ourselves because that would be improper. But if you see something egregious, I've been known to make mistakes in the past. I would take it as a great favor if something seemed inappropriate to you or otherwise I'll bring it up for discussion at the next meeting publicly.
Well, that's not fair. Yeah, that should happen.
Yeah.
Dean? So as a former town manager was want to say, when people would bring up the CPI, uh, I'm paraphrasing a little bit. The town, by extension, the school district does not buy diapers, dog food. In other words, the CPI is not the appropriate index to use. There should be a, and there there are several CPIs. It's interesting as a rough guide.
That's always.
Should be an MPI, a municipal price index, because our basket of goods and services is different than the average consumer's basket of goods and services. But your point is a very, you know, is not unreasonable. And it's it's done quite commonly. People will compare and they certainly taxpayers will compare compared to their own basket of goods and services. Whether they think an increase in their taxes or a decrease, if that ever happens, um, you know, is is fair and reasonable. That's certainly how they're going to look at it. Um, so I applaud the attempt. But I feel bound to mention, because I used to get hit in the head with it, that the CPI doesn't apply to your municipal operations, shouldn't apply to municipal operations.
First of all, you're absolutely correct. Second, if you have a better uh a better measure than the CPI, I'd be delighted to recalculate. And I just know, I'm speaking only for myself, it it pains me to hear people come to town council meetings saying, I love the work you're doing. Don't you dare raise the budget dissent. And I just want to say, look, this is the world we live in, at least in my opinion, and that's that's the figure I used.
The the, I'll I'll counter that with by saying that there are people who understand, I suspect most people understand why it is that things, budgets, municipal budgets, state budgets move the way that they do. But again, when they look at their own pocketbook, they say, well, I understand that life has gotten more expensive. However, my income has not changed and therefore somehow in the box that I'm in, I have to make it work. And the, and the taxing authorities have the luxury, if you will, of saying well, it is what it is. We can ask and we get by force, if necessary, more money. That's something that none of us can do in our employment. So we have to keep that in mind as well.
Just an attempt and I look forward to it. It's just an attempt and I look forward to additional comments and it's not a hill I'm going to die on. I just thought I'd bring it up for conversation.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
If you don't want this, I'm going to take it.
Oh, no, I had it.
Thank you, Mark.